Good evening and welcome to Neighborhood Board 14. A couple administrative announcements, please turn off your cell phones. And if you want to be recognized, please raise your hand, especially those who are on WebEx. All right, who's that? Oh, is that Cara? Hi Cara. All right, great. All right, first of all, let's do a roll call, see if we got quorum.
Okay, roll call. Chair Fang.
Here.
Higa.
Yeah.
Kaapu.
Present.
Maguiwa, absent. Mitsuda.
Here.
Here.
Na'oa Ota.
Present.
Ping. Not here yet. Yamamoto.
Present.
White. Not here. Nita. Kentru. Christian, not here. Eight members present, we have quorum.
Great, thank you very much. Before I forget, Happy Chinese New Year, it was on the 29th of January? Yes. And does everybody know what year this is? Year of the snake, right? Any snakes here? I guess not, anyway. All right, first order, let's have the Honolulu Fire Department. I believe they are on call. Not on call, they're on, yeah. They're on eight calls, so we'll pass on them. How about the Police Department, are you here? They're on call too, all right. But I know who's here, very important, our long-lost friend, haven't seen for a long time. Welcome back.
Hello there, good evening and kungipachoi, charming Fugai. I know where my printout is, it's on my desk, so I will have to read off my phone. So, no main breaks in January. And one general announcement is a water waste hotline. So if you see water being wasted, such as a broken pipe, or malfunctioning sprinkler, a running faucet, or excessive watering, or something similar, so let us know so we can follow up with any unnecessary water loss. So you can report this water waste to our website, boardofwatersupply.com/waterwaste. You can also email us at contactus@hbws.org. And you can always, huh? Oh, HBWS.org, Honolulu Board Water Supply dot org. And you can also call 808-748-5041. So yeah, let's make every drop count and do our part to conserve our precious and limited water supply, as water is life. So that's my quick announcement. And if there's any questions, and sorry if I had any follow-ups, I just didn't.
It's okay. We're just happy to see you here.
Yeah.
Any questions from the board? Yes, Donald, he's.
Um, hey Iris.
Yes.
On the on the highway, if we see water coming out, who do we call? Do we call the state, or do we call your folks?
Um, you know, I won't, I don't know exactly what street and who owns it, so basically it's okay.
It's a state highway.
Yeah, but it's okay to call us, or contact us, and give as much detail of it so that we can go and look ourselves, or at least contact the appropriate agencies if we can, like say it's State DOT, or someone else. So yeah, if you have it in intersections, or any boundaries of the street numbers, that'll be great, yeah.
Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the audience? If not, Iris, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along, filling of vacancies. We have one vacancy in Sub District 4, which is, I'm looking at my map, it's around the Ala Neo area, down near School Street, and Mapu Lane, and that are, anybody? Okay, moving right along, resident concerns, anybody have any resident concerns? WebEx, everybody's happy, that's good. Ompo. Cara? Ompo?
Unmuting, oops. Okay, oh, I can't get my video to, wait a minute, hold on. There we go, okay. The Citizens Advisory Committee to the Oahu Metropolitan Planning Organization, which is for transportation, met its usual first Wednesday of the month, on the 5th of February. And we went through our procedural vote on term limits for the board chair and the vice chair, because it wasn't congruent with the other boards for Ompo, and now we're, now we're even. And, see, the only other thing to report really is something that the audience might be interested in. The Hawaii Bicycle League is sponsoring a free bike maintenance workshop. It's called Fix a Flat Workshop. It's 90 minutes long, to be held on the 22nd of February, a Saturday, 1:00 to 2:30 PM in IAA. And if you go to hbl.org, you can register and get more details. You don't need to have any prior experience with bike maintenance. And that's it.
I assume you need a bike?
Well, yeah, it would help.
Are they gonna furnish a bike for Russ?
Well, they'll have a demonstration, they'll have a demonstrated, I'm sure they'll have a, you know, demonstrator bike for.
Thank you, any questions? Okay, from the board, the audience? Okay, thanks Cara. All right, moving right along, let's see, any reports from members attending other meetings that may be of interest to us? Okay, none? Uh, let's see, presentations, aha. I don't see a bike. Uh, Citizen Advisory Committee, no, I'm strike that, I'm sorry, Community Bike Ride, Kalihii Valley Instructional Bike Exchange, is that correct? And Rona, right? All right, please come up to the mic and tell us all about it.
Good evening, everyone, thank you for having me tonight. My name is Rona, I'm the Youth Services Director of Kukua Kalihii Valley, of which Kalihii Valley Instructional Bike Exchange, or K-Vibe, a youth program, is under Kukua Kalihii Valley. Actually, K-Vibe is celebrating its 20th year, this 2025. So it's a program that uses bikes as a way to bring and build the capacity of youth. So bikes are donated from all over the island, used bikes, and, and our staff, who are trained bike mechanics, teach the youth to refurbish the bike, remove those that are not useful, we buy the parts, and then they'll help them to build the bike. And it will be their own bike, and they can bring it home. There are also members of community, houseless people who come to our shop, and who needs transportation, so we help them rebuild those bikes available there, and they use it as a means of transportation. The Community Bike Ride, or Kalihii Ahupa Ride, is an annual bike ride that's sponsored by K-Vibe program. And it's led by the youth, who are participants in the program, and this year it will be on April 12, Saturday, 2025. So we start at 8 o'clock, at, um, our route is, it starts with, at, um, Ko'oloaina, it's a 100 acre deep in the Kalihii Valley. And then we ride to the bike shop, which is located at 1638 Kamehameha Road. And then from there, we will go to Pu'eia Cemetery, near Walgreens in North School Street. And then from there, we go to Bishop Museum. And then from Bishop Museum to Nehalevi Garden, right on the North School Street, inside in the Mexican restaurant over there. And then from there, we go to Kalakaua District Park for a 10 to 15 minute break. And then from there, we go to Sun Island, where we end the ride and have some celebrations there. So, in the bike shop, and Pu'eia Cemetery, and Nehalevi, our youth are doing talk, sharing their stories, and part of it is that to show who they are, as Kalihii youth. I mean, there are different narratives in the community about Kalihii youth, but this is an opportunity for them to speak, and share their stories, share their thoughts on issues that matters to them, so they do speak on those different sides. We cap our participants to 125, for our capacity participants, so that's what we will be doing on April 12, 2025.
Great, congratulations, that's terrific. Just a couple of questions. Is this just for youth, or any age? That's the first question. The second question is, how long this is ride?
Um, no, it's not only for youth, it's open to all the communities, so our registration is now open, and it's for anyone who would like to join us in the, in the ride. And this is about 8.5 mile ride.
And I assume you gotta bring your own bike, right?
Uh, yes, that's what we are asking, but if there's someone who really wants to participate, but who needs a bike, so and there is registration, they can, uh, put that needs, and we'll try to help them, they can come to the shop, look what bikes is there, and we'll try to prepare a bike for them. We usually have 40 bikes available every ride, that's for about, for our youth, and about for the community also, who needs a bike that's available during the ride in itself.
Questions, board? Yes, Carol?
If someone has a bike to donate, how should, how can they do that?
Um, you can contact, we have our phone number at K-Vibe, I don't, I cannot memorize, but I'll give you my phone number, you can call me, and then I will add it, 808-738-7727. You can text or call me, and then I can direct you to our K-Vibe team staff there. Yeah, but that's the KKB, it's that, it's that 291, that's the best. Nukis number.
Okay, so what's the number?
Yes. 808-291-7613, that's, so the K-Vibe program coordinator will answer the call or text. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? How about from the audience? All right, well, at the end, I assume that it can be good refreshments, right?
Yes, we do have a dental.
Yeah, all right, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, moving right on, next presentation is, let's see, somebody from the City Department of Environmental Services. Hello? They were supposed to explain why there's an increase in sewer fees. Well, I guess they're not here, we'll just put them on hold. Next, Mayor's Representative, Ed.
Hello, and good evening, Edward Lospanos, Deputy Director, Department of Community Services. I'm Mayor's Rep for Neighborhood Board 14. Highlights from the Mayor's Newsletter, you can check it out online, I have a copy here, but you can check it out online. Few highlights, the memorial service for fallen firefighter Jeff Piala happened a couple weekends ago, right before the Chinatown parade, but that was, you know, they don't have it often, but when they do, they hit pretty hard, so condolences to Jeff Piala and his family. Also, last month, Mayor Blangierdy was sworn in for his second term, four-year term, so he started second four-year term, and then Mayor's Cabinet, including myself, was sworn in. There's a new affordable housing, and 97 affordable housing project broke ground in Makiki, at the corner of Pensacola and Wilder. We have repairs to a seawall on the walkway at Queen Surf in Waikiki, near the, right in front of the Barefoot Beach Cafe. That project will take about six months to complete. And then finally, the city unveiled its new trash truck for Leeward Oahu Parks and Beach Parks. I mean, this is kind of a big deal, because even ever since COVID, we've had a kind of a, haven't been able to get garbage trucks, this is kind of stalled in the supply chain, so while we've ordered them, and even fire trucks and other apparatus, the vendors have been canceling our orders and not fulfilling them, so it's not by choice, but so when we do get them, they're kind of big news, and this one, I know from the Leeward side and that whole region, trash was just pounding up, because we didn't have enough equipment to pick up the trash in that area. Um, otherwise, I got a announcement for the Neighborhood Board Commission, so Neighborhood Board Elections Registration is now open, candidate and voter filing deadline is February 21st, 2025. The voting will begin on April 25th, 2025, and close on May 16th, 2025. Anybody interested, I know we have a vacancy on this board. To be a candidate, you, any resident is eligible, including military, military families, legal resident aliens, must be 18 years of age by the, by that filing date, February 21st, 2025, and you must live within the neighborhood boundary. Similar requirement for those who want to vote in the, for the election. Now, folks that want to vote, get 18 by February 21st, 2025, you can go ahead and register with the NCO office, let's go reach out and contact Kamela or, or folks, or friendly folks over there, and they can get you registered too, as long as you're 18 by that date. I do have a few updates for you on the other items on the agenda here. First up, I have alleged illegal activity at abandoned property at 1621 Pohaku Street. Back in October, I know that, we did set up, they did kind of clear out, we couldn't pull onto the property, because that would've been trespassing, we didn't get landlord, we didn't have landlord permission. Nobody was on site at the time when they, that October visit, but you're, but if you guys do see illegal activity or suspicious activity, go ahead and call 911, that was the update I provided back in October, that still stands. DTP is trying to get in contact with the landowner, but they don't, they can't really regulate what folks do on their property unless it's like really overboard, yeah. Illegal activities, suspicious activity, it's all within the realm of HPD. Installation of no parking sign on the Makai and Mamalu Drive, I noticed that one got completed, but that's slow, slow sign, Chair Fang looks terrible. I was in that area this, this weekend, I don't know if you want to put that one in for them to clean it, or get a new sign, or whatever they gotta do, but I know there's no parking sign is up though. Similarly, let's see, the no parking sign at 518 North Judge Street, that one, the sign didn't go back on a pole, but I noticed it's on the telephone pole, when I drove by on my way up here. So that one's completed. The installation number three of the crosswalk on New Uwano Avenue and Bates Street. So right now, for this one, the Department of Transportation Services is not recommending proceeding with that crosswalk, restriping or repainting, they want to, they want to proceed with the complete streets manual design, to make that intersection and crosswalk safer before they proceed with the restriping.
Let me ask you a question before you go on, back to Mamalo, are they gonna put up a no parking sign closer to the Makai end of Mamalo Street? Because you go over that, the hump, I can't see that no parking sign, you just drive over there, it's, it's got all this vegetation hanging up.
So Makai end, are you going, are you going
I'm going, I'm sorry, going
to Mamalo, or
Yeah, I'm going, I'm going Maoka.
You're going Maoka?
Yeah. Just go over that little hump, yeah, that's it. Because I see a lot of guys parking there, we nearly had near, near accident a few times. So they, they gotta know not to park over there. So I'm gonna leave that on the agenda, you could take a look at it.
So you want it, so I think
I like to
So you want it on the other side of the road? The Ma'aka Bound Lane?
No, I like to have it on the Diamond Head Bound Lane, outside of
The Makai Bound Lane?
Okay, if you're going over the hump
A level onto Mamalo?
Yeah, into Mamalo?
Yeah.
On the right-hand side, there's a big sign there, I forget what sign, but put a no parking on this, that area.
Okay.
Take a look at it.
That's in the
Because, because you don't see the no parking sign until you go over the hump, and then you go down, and you still can't see it, because it's all this vegetation. And what happens is, when they're going over the hump, guys are coming this way, they can't see, and they go over, and especially if somebody's parked over there. We had some pretty close, you know, head-on collisions, and they have some of these, you know, what do you call it, Amazon trucks, and FedEx trucks, and everything parked on the right, and you're gonna try to go around them on the right, and the guy's coming on the, coming on through the left. Anyway, double checking that.
Okay, no, that, that helps, I think they're, like I said, they were focused on the side coming out.
No, 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 no.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
You want to do the Bates Street, ask them. Item number three.
Sorry, this isn't related to Bates Street. I was wondering if there's an update on Ala Neo Street, if DTS mentioned anything about that?
I don't have that in my report. So Ala Neo Street, I know you have, you're usually talking about the crosswalks in the schools, I know there's two schools on Ala Neo Street, one Lana Keela on the Ma'aka side, and the one closer to the freeway is escaping me right now.
Yeah, Leke, I believe. It's, is it Leke, Leke? That second one, but I'm more sort of thinking those, Lana Keela.
Lana Keela?
Yeah, yeah.
Was this the inquiry about the race crosswalk? Or no, was it?
I believe a resident had brought up a concern about the, making a no-left turn on that, and that DTS was supposed to do a traffic study, so I was just wondering if there's any updates on that.
I don't have one, but I'll get one for you.
Okay, thank you.
I have on, um, Kapalama and Hala. I thought, well, I don't see it, but I thought we have an issue on that, that the state, considering county was gonna do, look at how to make that road safe, and the intersection safe. The last time you told me that you folks were making an investigation on the data, what is the status of that right now?
I don't have that in my report, it probably was in, I think I had a, I think I gave the update a couple months ago, but I don't have that on me right now.
Okay, yeah, because this has been going on for maybe a year already, and the city has done nothing about it. You have an accident area that is very, very highly, um, I can't see it, there's too many accidents on that intersection, and we have too many speeding on Kapalama Avenue, and some of that accidents are caused by speeding. So we wanted to know if, or what the city supposed to provide us for a safety measure to make that street and intersection safe? Because I'm tired of hearing that you guys are making the investigation, you guys doing a research and all these things, okay? It's been almost like I said, a year.
Remember Nita, in the various reports I've given, and in multiple times, I think we've had police come and report, I think the police have, have staged in that area, they didn't report any, I think the reports that they had were pretty low. I mean, so I mean, I wouldn't say we wouldn't, we weren't doing anything, I think when we staged HPD in that area, the reports that they're giving us is, is low, I believe the last report I gave a couple months ago, was that there wasn't, the incident count wasn't there. I believe that's what the, I mean, I, that's my recollection of what the report said.
Well, I can tell you, because I live at the corner, and we can have maybe three accidents in one month. And that's a simple intersection. So I'm saying, since we know we have a problem, and the Police Department know they have a problem too, I mean, when are we gonna have some action from the city to correct this problem? It's very simple.
Chair Fang, I guess I'd recommend that maybe we request Department of Transportation Services come and do a presentation to this Neighborhood Board, I know, it sounds like, I mean, most of the concerns I get, most of the things on my chart here, have to deal with transportation issues, I mean, so I'd recommend maybe you get somebody from DTS to come to Neighborhood Board meeting, and they'd be in a much better position to respond to Mr. Nita.
Which department?
Transportation Services.
Thank you. Okay, Milla, can we, can you request that they come and talk about the intersection of Kapalama and Hollis Drive intersection, make it safer, I guess that's what it is, right?
I mean, the boards also talked about Ala Neo, I remember Ota, now Ota, and then the Bates Street as well, and New Uwano as well.
Well, New Uwano and Bates, again, we already got a report that they're not gonna put in a crosswalk, they're saying they're gonna wait to redo it, I mean, is that the end of the story?
That is the, as far as I, as far as the request is going currently. But you know, every time I come to this Neighborhood Board, I mean, there's, there's always a incident about to happen, and you know, there's a sense of safety and urgency that I want to make sure is addressed to your satisfaction, right? Because I mean, if you just provided the question as best as I can word it, you know, those are the reports I'm getting, yeah. But you know, a lot of it that you guys are concerned about, and I agree with, is about prevention.
Well, the reason why, let me go back to the Bates Street and New Uwano, is that our Neighborhood Board is not the only one concerned, I think it's Neighborhood Board 12, they, they are the ones that really raised the issue. So I'll put that on the agenda and ask DOT, I mean, DTS to come and speak on both of them? Okay, I'll do that, can you? I'll talk to you about it after, and we'll put it on the agenda, okay? Anything else? Well, how about the 518 North Judge Street?
518 Judge Street, I noticed that, that the sign didn't get put up, the pole and the sign didn't get up, but I noticed there's a new no parking sign on the light pole now.
Well, there's a new one?
Yeah.
Somebody was saying that they would knock it down so that their friends can park it when they have a party, I don't know, somebody said that. No? But there, there's one now, right?
There's one on the post.
All right, I'm gonna cross that out, so much for that one. Thanks.
At least when I drove by, I mean, I looked at the Google Math to see like what it, what it looked like before.
Good enough.
I did just need a new one.
I, I was a little surprised when somebody said that, you know, they cut the poles, like, anyway. Okay, anything else?
Yes.
Nope, that's all I have. Any other questions?
Yes. I apologize, I didn't mean to do, um, put my frustration on you, okay? It's just an issue that has been going on so long, that there's no resolution, I mean, I, I think it's a very simple resolution, and I'm not even an engineer. So the thing is that, you know, and I apologize, I shouldn't take my frustration to issue. Sorry, thank you.
And Nita, I wouldn't, you know, be recommending Transportation Services if I didn't get that sense of urgency from you.
Okay, we'll take care of that, we'll have DTS come and speak on the Bates, I mean, Ala Neo, and also the Kapalama Hala speeding. In regards to the, the new one on Bates, do they want to speak, I think they already spoke, they gotta wait, that's it. There's nothing more we can hear from them, right? So, that's it?
I, I think you can answer your question, I remember the, the community members that came out and talked about it, it's around the church time, they do have the parishioners or the, the folks visiting the church that use, that are illegally crossing or making use of that unmarked crosswalk, and And if it is a hazard, you can hear from them.
Well, I think that's all we could do. We already posed the issue. Now the question is what are they gonna do? And they said, we're gonna wait until we redo the whole place. And then, and then somebody said, well, you just paint it until you redo the whole place. But I guess the answer is, we're just gonna wait for an accident.
Well, like I said, that's why I encourage you all, because I guess here the sense of urgency to contact DTS and let's have them bring it before them. But I also know that Councilmember DeSantis' office is also working on this similar matter.
Yes, it's under, uh, well, let's wait to see what he has to say. Okay, any other questions for Ed? Yes, can you come up and to the mic?
Hi, my name is Ryan Lim. I was just taking a look at the mayor's newsletter, and I was wondering about this financial assistance for real impacted Kalih businesses. I noticed that the deadline date, it seems very soon to me. Like, it already passed. And I'm, I, my concern is, like, I know a number of business owners, because my family, we own a small business. I know a number of small business owners in the Kalih area, and I think that deadline would have been too short for them. And another thing I was concerned about was just the requirements. In order to have like 15 employees, I think most small businesses would need to, would usually have a revenue that's greater than $750,000, just because you need, like, that's not enough to cover 15 employees, just revenue alone. So I think the requirements are a bit too narrow.
Thank you. Anybody else, any questions? Yes, Darren.
Congratulations, I hope, on your reappointment. We appreciate you being here. I have a couple of questions for you, and I guess it's just a recap for everything. So just a reminder that we had a bunch of folks come in and talk about this painting of the crosswalk. It was there before the repavement, right? We know that government takes a while, and there probably is no ETA on this. But when you have all the residents making a plea to get this fixed, you also have us doing a resolution. And with everything that's going on, we still don't have an answer, I think, that makes anybody happy. And there's, it looks like we're waiting for something to happen before something happens. So is there a way for us, like we had said, maybe to bring in? Because when you look at where this resolution went, it went to Councilmember DeSantis' office, it went to DTS, it went to DFM, it went to DTC, it went to everybody. And at the end of the day, it looks like DFM just said, no, we're not gonna do it. And I think as a resident, that's not good enough. Especially when you have so many people that are concerned about this. And then, and I know I'm, you know, you've heard this many, many times, and my apologies for bringing it up. But I think it's important for everybody to understand that month to month, we're dealing with the same thing. And it's weird to me that DFM can just say, or whoever it is, can say, no. Especially when there's so much concern about this one crosswalk. And it feels like I'm beating the drum like everybody else, but I think somebody's gotta come answer to this. And I know that we've talked about this, and Chance, I'll pass it to you.
Sorry, I was just gonna see, um, and Cor, correct me if I'm wrong. I believe OMPo is the organization working directly with the Complete the Streets project, yes?
Um, yeah, we're on an advisory basis.
If anything would, would we possibly, Chair Fong, would we possibly be able to ask somebody from Complete Streets to come down and speak about this issue to see?
Okay, no, we can ask anybody to come on down, but let's do this. Let's wait to see what our council member, because he's got the ball, okay? And see what he has to say. Then from there, let's see what we're gonna do.
Okay.
Because right now, the city's, you know, our city representatives can't do anything.
Yeah.
And it's, I think it's really gonna be, and we already got an answer from the city saying, no, we'll wait until, you know, we finish. So let's see what our council member says. And if it does not up to our satisfaction, you can do whatever you want. But again, you know, it's the old golden rule, right? Who has the goal makes the rules? Well, they got the goal, and they ain't gonna fix it unless, you know, they do it. So let's wait.
Yes, sir, thanks.
All right. Thanks, Ed. Yeah. All right, um, you know, if, yes.
Sorry, Chair Wes, I have on Webex Lieutenant Yamashita from HPD. He's present.
Sorry.
Lieutenant Yamashita from HPD.
Oh, okay.
On Webex.
All right. If there are objections, we're gonna go back to the HPD. Then after that, if there are objections, we have a presentation by the City Department of Environmental Services. And I believe we have a representative, uh, HPD first. Thank you. They wear the uniform and. All right, HPD, welcome.
Good evening. Sorry, I was late at a little meeting with my, some of my supervisors. So we're gonna go quickly over the stats for the month of January. For aggravated assaults, we had zero. Auto thefts, we had eight. Burglaries, we had seven. Robberies, we had zero. Sex assaults, we had one. We had seven simple assaults. We had 23 thefts. And we had four unauthorized entries into motor vehicles. And total calls for service were 1,429. I'll touch up on the sex crime case real quick. It was occurred in the beginning of January. On the Lana Kila area, a female was leaving the health center, and she was touched inappropriately by one of her acquaintances. She made a case, a case was assigned to a sex crimes detective. And they're still, he's still trying to follow up with her to meet with her for a follow-up interview. It's just taking some time due to her physical medical condition at this time. And I know last meeting with Lieutenant Hatiko, I believe you guys were asking about the weapon cases you guys were a little concerned with. So I looked up some statistics for any weapon cases or calls that we had for service. And we had two calls for service, actually. So one was in the New Wano area. It was regarding a male who was armed with a bat. The officers went over there to the area, but no criminal offense occurred. So there was nothing needed for that. The second incident occurred up in Makonani area. They thought some juveniles were armed with some firearms. Officers went up there, located the juveniles, and it appeared that the juveniles were armed with Nerf guns. So those toy guns. So they were armed with Nerf guns rather than firearms. Another topic you guys also brought up was a burglary up in Aleva. I couldn't find any burglary cases that you guys were talking about in Aleva. The nearest one I could find was in the Punui area. Down on it appears the suspects removed some lovers. The detective is also assigned to the case for that. He's waiting for a complaining to hand over any video surveillance she may have. And as of right now, the suspect is still unknown, and the case is still pending further investigation. Another incident you guys also brought up was the loud noises or explosion noises or loud noise complaints in the Lana Kila Park area. So I went to go check up the statistics for that. Officers handed out seven citations for park closures in the area, and we continue to do nightly checks at that park. And last but not least, we also had a town hall, the ending of January. We, one of the concerns that was brought up was regarding the intersection on Alii, Aleva, and Ilima Drive. And a lot of residents in the area were talking about how vehicles disregard the stop signs over there, and they just continue driving. So I looked up the statistics from then. We gave out 21 stop sign citations as of this time. And also, our community policing team is still trying to coordinate a sign-waving event for the area that you guys were just talking about, the Hala Drive and Makuhine area. So we're still trying to coordinate something over there. And last but not least, our district, also District 5 Kalih, we have a coffee with a cop. It's gonna be on Friday, February 28, at the McDonald's at Y Comino Shopping Center, located at 1414 Dillingham Boulevard. And the event will be held from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. So the members of the community, we encourage you guys to come out and share a cup of coffee and share some stories and ideas with the police officers, so we can build some relationships with you, everyone. Other than that, turn over my time for any questions, comments, or concerns.
Well, let me first of, I wanna thank the HPD in regards to upper Leva Heights. We had this homeless individual burgling all the homes, taking stuff out of the garage, et cetera. And we haven't had any complaints, at least I haven't, because of your patrolling. So thank you very much. Any questions from the board? Any comments? Audience? Not? Bixby. Bixby.
You don't have a vacancy for me, sorry. Mr. Chair, my name is Bixby Ho, former neighborhood board member, longtime Lily Ha president. Lieutenant, question for HPD. How often are the body cam? The body cams worn, especially for, you know, the small cases?
How often are they worn? Are officers wear their body cams every night when they go out to work?
Okay, are they on?
The body cams are activated, yes. When they get sent to a calls for service, they activate their body cams.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay, if not, thanks a lot, HPD.
Thank you, you guys have a good night.
Yeah, you too. At this time, I wanna call the representative from the City Department of Environmental Services. I believe he's the new director? Thank you.
Okay, good evening, Chair Fong and board members. Thanks for having me here tonight. My name is Roger Babcock. I'm the director of the Department of Environmental Services for the city. We take care of sewer and solid waste for everybody. And I want to appreciate, let me give you a talk to talk about our sewer fees. So the sewer enterprise, maintenance of our sewer system and as well as our capital program is an enterprise service. So kind of like water supply, it's based on fees that are taken in. It's not based on property tax, so we don't get any money for property tax. So sewer fees need to pay for the entire operation. So that's important to note. And the sewer fees can't be used for anything other than sewer. So property taxes pay for all the other city services, police, fire, everything else except for sewer and water. And water is a separate bill, as you know, from your, from the bill that you get every month. So what we do is we take care, we treat about an average of 100 million gallons of wastewater every day. That's done at nine different treatment plants, collected through 2,100 miles of sewer pipes, and we have 72 pump stations around the island. Your sewage from here, the few folks that live here in Lily Ha and Palama, et cetera, goes to Sand Island Wastewater Treatment Plant down near downtown. The, so the sewer fees were last increased in 2016. So it's been nine years since we've had an increase in sewer fees. However, along that time, our operation and maintenance costs have gone up due to inflation and increases in the cost of everything from electricity and fuel to wages and all other current expenses. The other thing that's gone up is our debt service. So because we're kind of an enterprise fund, that means we also issue our own debt. So the city does capital projects based on general obligation bonds. We do our work based on municipal sewer bond funds that are tax-free. And we issue bonds every year. And so most of our capital projects are based on, are based on debt. And so sewer bonds are, they're like a mortgage, they're 30-year duration. There's interest and principal that needs to be paid back. So we have continued to accrue debt as we've gone along over the years. And so our, about half of our budget, our budget's about $450 million a year, our operating budget. That's what, and that's equivalent to what sewer fees are. About half of that is operation and maintenance and current expense costs, and the other half is debt service. And debt service continues to increase. In addition, we have a very large capital program. You may not realize it, but the sewer enterprise, the 15-year period between 2025 and 2040, has a $10 billion capital program to do all the things we need to do, including upgrading and maintaining our sewer, our trunk sewers and our pump stations, our treatment plants, forest mains, gravity sewers. And one big one that we have is called the 2010 Consent Decree, which was, as it's, as it's mentioned, is from 2010. At 2010, the city entered into a legal settlement in federal court with the EPA and the Department of Justice, the Department of State, Department of Health, and several non-governmental organizations to do a bunch of projects over 25 years up through 2035 to improve the system. And there's one, two, it was broken into three phases. Two of the phases are completed now, just this past year. And there's just the final phase to finish up, and that's the upgrade of the Sand Island Wastewater Treatment Plant to meet the requirements of the 1972 Clean Water Act. So we're a little bit behind, but we're catching up in terms of meeting the federal requirements for secondary treatment. Everything's on schedule to get that project done. However, it's in, it's in the middle right now. So if you look at the graph at the bottom of the front page, you'll see a big orange spike there that says consent decree. And that's the project that I'm talking about to sort of finish off that agreement from 2010. And the money needs to be procured there in '28 and '29. So that's coming up soon, and that will be additional debt that we have to issue and get that project done. So the additional, you know, additional money that's needed does pay for, you know, continuing to run the system, which does have an increase of about 3% per year for, you know, basically for inflation. Do you need to finish that 2010 consent decree? We need to continue to be proactive and replace our infrastructure before it fails. We also need to comply with continuously stringent, becoming more and more stringent regulations. And so we have that, we have that programmed in. But the EPA and the Department of Health continue to provide new, new requirements. Wastewater Treatment Plants have operating permits that are issued by the EPA and the Department of Health. They expire every five years. And so every five years, we have to negotiate a new permit, and there's always new requirements in there. But most of them, they let us know five to 10 years in advance. So it allows us to plan for our capital projects. So we have projects that we need to do that are due in 2030, 2035, and 2040. So that's important that we do that planning. So what that means, though, is that we have a really good idea of what our expenses are over for the long term. So we have proposed to a 10-year rate package that will go through 2025, that's this year, through 2035 essentially, with increases each year on July 1st, which is the beginning of the fiscal year. So there is a table shown there, and the percent increases are listed, and there is an example bill in the table. But the fee revenue increases that we need are 9% per year, additional each year for six years, followed by smaller increases in the out years, 8, 7, 6, and 5%. So what that means is that overall, it's a large increase, but it is spaced out over 10 years. So it's over 100% increase or a doubling of the bill. But it does depend on how much water you use, how much your bill will actually go up. But I'll come back to that in a second. But basically, that is, does coincide with the completion of the consent decree work. It finishes that project off over this, over this 10 years. It has to be finished by 2035, 10 years from now, and everything's on course to get that done. But this rate package would, would get us through that entire 10 years without having to go back and ask for more at some point, along the way, for example, a few years from now. So that's kind of the thinking behind this. It also gives people a chance to plan and know, you know, know what's gonna happen. And by the way, the, our sewer fees are pretty similar to other municipalities this size across the country. And everybody is facing sewer fee increases because of increased demands and consent decrees, increased regulations and consent decrees. So there is some example bills, and I'll, I'll let you know that that is a single example. There are a whole table of examples where you could go in and look at what your personal water use is and what you could expect. There are a whole table of examples where you could go in and look at what your personal water use is and what you could expect your bill to be in the future. That's on our website. Um, the references there, Honolulu.gov forward slash E N V. And then you can just, there's a header at the top that'll get you to sewer fee rates. And there's the, this information and a lot more. So one of the things I want to mention, two quick things about the, that we're doing with respect to this, uh, sewer fee increase that's a little bit different. So we are changing the fee structure and, um, we're also offering a customer assistance program. So these are in the, in the proposal that we have submitted to city council. The way a fee increase package is generated is you do a fee study, uh, which does, uh, looks at all those year expenses out to at least 2040. Uh, it looks at revenue, that revenue requirements. First you have to do a cash flow, uh, and figure out what all the debt service is. You figure out your expenses and you get a revenue requirement. And then you can figure out what the rate, uh, package is that's needed. And just so you know, we started that in 2023, all the way through 2023. We had a stakeholder advisory group throughout almost all of 2024 and finally came up with a recommended rate package with, with their assistance. And one of the main things that they recommended was a change in the fee structure. So currently the, as shown in the table, for a single family residence, the fixed fee, there's a fixed fee and a volumetric fee. The fixed fee is $77.55. So even if you use no water, you pay the 77.55. Uh, and then the volumetric fee is based on how much water you use. So that's calculated. Border Water Supply has a meter at everybody's house. They read that every month. And then we get that data from them. We subtract 20% because we assume 20, at least 20% of the water that you buy from Border Water Supply is used outside your house for irrigation and does not become sewage. So there's an automatic credit of, of 20%. And then the remaining volume in thousands of gallons is charged $4.63 per thousand gallons. And that is the single volumetric rate for no matter how much water, how many thousands you use. So currently, um, about 70% of the typical bill or 75% is the fixed fee and only about 25% to 30% is the volumetric charge. That gives people very little, um, ability to control your sewer bill. So we've, uh, going to be modifying that to be a 50/50 so that about, only about half of your bill will be a fixed charge and more like half will end up being volumetric. That gives, uh, it's kind of an equity concern and ability to, uh, control your own bill. So in the future, once that's implemented, then when you save water, so it promotes water conservation. If you save water, there's a bigger benefit to your bill. It's worth more. Right now, if you use a thousand less gallons per month, it only saves you $4.63. Uh, and a thousand gallons is quite a bit, considering the median use is 6,000 gallons per month. Um, meaning half the people use 6,000 gallons per month or less and half use more. In the future, um, that water will cost a lot more per thousand gallons, but the fixed fee stays about the same. And, um, so that's what we're doing in terms of changing the fee structure. The other thing I wanted to mention is that we have a, a program called Customer Assistance Program, which would, um, be, it's kind of modeled after the R U R P Rental and Uvitality Relief Program that the city ran during COVID, where to qualify for a reduction, a credit on your sewer bill, you'd have to qualify as based less than 80% of the area median income for the, for the household income would be less than 80%. You'd be eligible for a credit of $20 to $25 per month off of your base charge. For, so for those that are eligible, that would wipe out the fee increase for several years. The, uh, and just to give you a perspective for the, um, this is actually a, what's called an average water user, the table that's here, but it actually means 70% of the people use less water than that. But basically, um, what you can see is you can see about a $10 to $12 per month increase in the first years and then a smaller in the, in the out years. Some folks who use less water, um, would see a much smaller increase in their, in their bills. So I think with that, um, it's a lot of information, a lot of numbers, um, but I'd be happy to, you know, answer any questions that you folks have.
Any questions from the board?
I got, I got one. So basically you're cutting down on the fixed fee and then basically if you use, use less water, then your sewer fee will be less.
Is that?
That's correct. Not necessarily less than today, but less than it would be otherwise.
So the bottom line is don't flush your toilet too often.
Yeah, exactly. So you're paying for water that you use everywhere, you know, in the house. You can take, you can potentially take shorter showers. You could use drought resistant landscaping, um, and, uh, and, and other perhaps water saving, you know, measures.
Yeah, I'm not being facetious, but what if I took the rainwater I'm collecting now, brought it inside, poured it down my, my toilet? I won't be charged then, right? I, that's, I'm saying.
Absolutely. That's right. That would be called gray water recycling or rainwater recycling. And, um, so that's a very, it's a very good point and something that we want to, to promote more.
Suggested and I'm not gonna do it. Yeah, that's chance.
Thank you for coming down tonight. I was wondering if, um, there is any possibility of the bill going back down to not what it is now, but I guess just going down period after the, um, 10 year period.
Yeah, that's a good question. So the answer is usually bills don't go down. And that's not just because, because that's a funny thing to say, but you know, we do all experience inflation, right? And, um, the city operations are no different, right? So my department, we have a $25 million a year HECO bill and it wasn't $25 billion 10 years ago, but it goes up. We, we know that. We buy a lot of diesel fuel too and, you know, fuel is expensive. Uh, we have a lot of other, uh, consumables, uh, including chemicals and lots of other things that we buy. And those generally never go down. So we, um, so just operations goes up. People also get raises, um, not big ones, but city workers do get raises. Uh, and there's, you know, increasing expenses. Uh, we do the, we, we do, um, everything that we can, you know, to manage costs and be efficient, uh, including especially with electricity. We have, um, a lot of programs in place. We, we have a lot of photovoltaic panels. Uh, we generate, uh, like eight megawatts of photoelectric PV on, on our different facilities. Uh, soon we'll be converting some of our methane gas into electricity for onsite use to also reduce our bill. And those things are permanent, you know, sort of, uh, cost saving things. And those will then essentially limit, uh, future rate increases. But, you know, in general, if you did nothing else, you should really increase fees about 3% per year. And that would account for inflation and then you really would be kind of okay in the long run. It's, um, it's hard when you have, um, uh, you have to raise fees a lot and then, and then people want it to go to zero. Uh, but the problem is when it's zero, you just kind of get behind and then you gotta raise it more again. And that's kind of been the, been the history with fee increases. Hope that answers your question.
It is. Thank you.
Any other questions, Tom?
You know, you folks had a program where you used a solid waste or fertilizer converted to fertilizer. How is that program coming along?
Yeah, thanks for that question. So we do make fertilizer at one of our treatment plants now, actually the, the Sand Island Treatment Plant. Uh, so we call that bio solids and, uh, that's done under a contract, uh, with a company. And they take care of the distribution of, of all of that material and they do distribute it. If we're actually not party, you know, to that, but we know that it doesn't go to, they, they have to tell us, uh, how much goes, is, is, uh, land applied? How much goes to landfill and, uh, almost nothing goes to landfill. So it is getting used. Um, we have, we're expanding that program currently, uh, under construction out in Eva Beach at the Hona Uli Uli plant. We have a dryer of our own under construction, a new one, and we'll be, um, marketing that product ourself. And almost all the rest of the bio solids are processed there from all the other treatment plants. So it's a regional one. So we'll be, um, you know, in the future, the goal is to, is to recycle everything. And, um, that's with the, that's with the bio solids. And just so you know, you may already know, but all the green waste that's collected in the green carts from your house is made into compost currently. And later this year or early next year, we'll begin having people put food waste in with the green waste. Uh, and that will also be made into compost. So that will come out of the gray carts and go in there. Uh, there are some upgrades required to the composting facility to be able to take food waste and those are under construction right now. So.
Yeah, because the thing is that I, I, um, as I mentioned, I thought the solid waste will be turned into fertilizer and the fertilizer will be sold to the public. Is that?
Yeah. So that's the goal in the future. When we get the Hona Uli Uli facility running. Um, we're currently, uh, doing some, uh, market analysis and, uh, putting together a business plan, you know, for, for those operations. And, uh, but I appreciate that. And that, that is, that is our goal, uh, to, to be able to do that.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board, from the audience? Okay, how about from Webex? None? Oh, yeah. Why don't you come on up and ask the question?
Hi, uh, my name is Ryan Lim. Um, I just had a question. I was wondering, is there like any way the city is planning to pay down the debt? Because it seems like it's about 50% of your operating budget or just your budget in general.
Yeah, thanks for that question. So, um, the, uh, debt financing is the best way to do, to do construction because otherwise, for example, we would need to get this whole $10 billion, uh, you know, to build these projects if we were going to pay cash. We only pay about 25% of our construction budget with cash. So the truth is kind of like the city, um, the rest of the city, general obligation bonds, um, the department and the city will never be debt free. We'll always need to use that vehicle as a way to construct things, uh, for the public good, of course, uh, and, and spread it out, uh, over, over the life. It's partly an equity thing, right? So, um, you want people to pay who are, who are benefiting from it as opposed to kind of paying for it all upfront. Because then the people who paid all that money, they might be gone, uh, and not paying for it while they're realizing the benefit for it. So that's kind of a little bit of an explanation, but in, um, so, but just so you know, just kind of like a mortgage or something, that every year we're refinancing existing debt. And it, that provides savings, um, that then can be used, you know, for other things. So we, we do that every year. We, we did some refinancing this year, which would save $30 million over 30 years. It's a long, it's a long period of time, but just like a mortgage, there's refinancing opportunities that happen all the time. When interest rates go down, a lot of our debt is issued, uh, every year. So we have a lot of old debt and the finance, the finance charges are different for all the different bonds we've ever issued. So, um, we're always looking for opportunities of that and restructuring our debt in order to save money.
Any more questions? No, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you. Yeah. And if you, if you ever have more questions about this, uh, or anything else, like maybe a landfill or something, feel free to, to invite me back and I'm happy to come.
We will definitely honor that invitation if we have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving right along. Our council member Tyler De Santos Tam, are you the representative for Mr. Well, some member Tam?
Aloha Chair. This is Lynn Robinson from Council Member Dos Santos Tam's office.
Aye.
Hi, um, taking Lisa's place tonight, but, um, we did, um, a good handoff. So I knew that this issue about, um, the crosswalk, um, would come up. I just want to let everyone know before I follow up on that, that I've put the council members, the link to the council members newsletter um, in the chat along with my count, my contact information. I am the constituent services director in council member's office. So, um, any of these community concerns or any follow-up, please, please don't hesitate to reach out to me. Um, also just, I won't belabor the, the newsletter, but, um, do want to say that, um, Bill 52, which is, um, additional regulations for the e-bikes, which I know has been top of mind for much of the district, uh, past. And it, it is going to the, uh, mayor for signature. And there's other legislative updates and updates about, um, you know, things going on in the district in the newsletter. I, you know, we absolutely understand the concerns. One of the very first things, um, that I worked on with, um, Leanna Ben was this, um, you know, reinstalling this crosswalk at, um, New Wano and Bates. And I, um, so the, I, you know, we've heard, um, Edward gave a good report that they answered back that we got was that the Department of Design and Construction is saying that rather than just painting the crosswalk, they'd rather do all of the improvements and that that would be pending funding. So this, uh, last week I reached out to Director Miles at the Department of, um, Design and Construction and just, you know, asked about, um, what more information we can get about when, you know, if they still need the funding, what would be the source of the funding and what the timeline is. Um, he asked me, he was kind of, um, not sure. So this answer is his answer, but then we do need to engage Complete Streets and Likely DTS. So he's asked me to submit a request for investigation and service report, a riser, which I did last week. And I, he told me that once he received that, that he would then, um, engage those other departments so that we can get a more comprehensive answer. Um, also, like I said, to include an answer about, um, where the funding would come from and if they need the funding and, and any way that we might be able to move this forward. So that's the only update on the issue that I have for you right now. That riser has been submitted. And then we will keep you in the loop and report back. I, um, if we have that information prior to the next meeting, um, you know, I'll get that to you, Chair. I, um, I'm, you know, I'm hopeful because Director Miles just understood that we needed, um, some more information that to the general public that has concerns, um, about the safety there. It, that just sounds like a hard no from a government agent, you know, agency. And I don't think they intended to sound like a no, but we definitely want to get some more information to you. So, um, does anyone have any questions about that? Maybe before we move on?
Yeah, I think that maybe some of our members may have question. Yeah. So the basic, you're telling us that there, we're still on hold to decide what they're going to be doing and.
Well, we're, yeah, we're definitely on hold. We're, but we're, I think that we deserve some more information about how long we're on hold for, or what would be the trigger to move a project like this forward? So that would be.
And what I'm going to do is I'm going to keep it on the agenda under, um, Councilmember, uh, Tam. Rather than have it under, um, the city representative. Unless Ed wants to take it on, no. Well, you get, you, you know, basically you and, 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 uh, Councilmember work on it together. So I'll keep it under both. How's that? Something it must have, gonna, gonna have to happen, right? Rather than every month giving us, you know, we're doing something about it. And actually, you, you know, we were faced with two neighborhood boards that are very concerned about this issue, not just one. Any, any questions or any comments? Yes, go ahead, Darren.
Hi there. Thank you for the information so far. I was just curious if you could provide an update on what type of work or design has been put in place so far? It's one thing to say, we're not going to do it, but there's another thing to say, we've already done studies. We know how much it's going to cost. Where are we in that process?
So, so, um, our best understanding of the, of the answer that we have from the Department of Design and Construction that reads like this. The shared improvements are planned to be included in future rehabilitation of the streets project, which is pending availability of funds. So we don't, I don't hear that as a no. Council member doesn't hear that as a no. But it doesn't say kind of more to your question if, um, what those, the broader improvements look like? What kind of funding has been, you know, assessed to be needed? And, and also if this is something that we're looking at in budget, does it need, you know, is the funding in the queue and not gotten where it needs to go? So it could be a budget and finance question. Um, so Director Miles just said that he would engage all entities so that we would get a more comprehensive answer. So it's not a no, it's just that, um, they're pushing back about just putting in the crosswalk and not having the other improvements. I don't want to speak too far out of turn, but in my past experience with Complete Streets, um, when they worry about the big thoroughfare and so many, you know, lanes and speed with crosswalks, you're kind of going against some federal guidelines that we're asking for. Um, there may be some kind of, um, assessments that are being done for like a road diet. Things that would slow traffic down in that area before the crosswalk would go in. I don't know that for a fact, but this is, this is what I can surmise why they would want to do the entire improvement before just paint, painting a crosswalk back or, or that the funding is pending because of the, the federal requirements that they can't just throw it in there.
Chair.
Yes, Carol.
So we did Complete Streets about a decade ago. It's complete. It is complete. The plan is complete or was complete at the time. We did all of New Wano and Liliha and they were just waiting for funding. We were one of the very first that they finished. So I think the plan exists. The question is, when are they going to start it?
And where, where the funding is coming from? That's good information. Thank you.
You know what you can do? I think all of us know what they want to do and, you know, what they plan to do. But can you give us like when? Yeah, you know, like, you know, hopefully we'll still be around.
That's what I'm asking for. Like what, what triggers, you know, what kind of funding, what triggers and when? And that's, that's definitely what I asked for the Department of Design and Construction to reach out to all departments that would be involved and get a timeline to you folks.
Just give us a time, timeframe. I mean, what else can we do? I mean, you know, they're the ones who are supposed to do it, but we should like to know when and if we don't want to wait until somebody gets killed in that crosswalk, but no crosswalk. But anyway, I think we've, I think we hit, buried this to the ground, right? Any other questions? Any other comments? Okay, if not, you have more?
Um, yeah, I just did want to follow up on, um, the board members concerned about the Kapalama and Hala Drive area. And I did go back into our internal, um, data and found that back in, um, of December of 2023, we put in that request as well. It was actually a comprehensive letter. So, um, and have, it was referred to DTS and they received it. And this is just how backlog things are. So I will, um, follow up with DTS on that request for traffic study and any, um, you know, if it's been completed, where they're at, um, and what improvements are recommended.
This is a traffic study for what?
Kapalama Avenue and that Hala Drive area. So, um, understandably, you know, there's some frustration there because we haven't heard of any, about, you know, we haven't heard anything for about a year. So I will follow up on that as well.
Okay, I'll, I'm going to put that under, um, uh, Councilmember Tam's also, uh, along with, with the city. Uh, because poor, poor Don has been here for I don't know how long and he's still waiting. So we've got to get this resolved. So thank you very much. Any, anything else?
I don't think I have anything else. Are there any more questions?
Any questions, board? None? New audience? Okay, if not, thank you very much. All right, moving right along. Who's next? Uh, Carl Rhodes.
Hello, everyone.
Any bits from Carl Rhodes's office?
Hello, yes, Chair.
Hi.
Everyone hear me all right?
Yes, go ahead.
All right, everyone. My name is Sarah and I'm the legislative aide for Senator Rhodes and I'll be relaying all of his messages for tonight. So starting off, a new updated 2024, 2025 COVID vaccine has been approved for use. COVID shots are now similar to flu shots in that they target the most prevalent strain of COVID. This vaccine is not meant to prevent symptoms of every COVID variant. The aim is to protect against severe illness, hospitalization and death. Flu shots are also available as the flu is particularly widespread this year. I was informed by the Hawaii Department of Transportation that they will be receiving 1.6 million in discretionary grant funding to explore the feasibility of conducting and constructing a cap park over H1 freeway between Liliha Street and Queen Emma Street. Funding is being made available through former President Biden's Reconnecting Communities Pilot Program, U.S. Department of Transportation. There's been two active sites of little fire ants.
Could, could you repeat that? What, what are they planning to do?
Yeah. So they're planning on creating a cap park.
A what?
A cap park. So what that is, it's a, it will go over the freeway, just connecting, um, basically so that like.
I'm, I'm sorry. Is it, do you?
A cap park, C A P, cap park?
A cap? Are you mean like a cap over the freeway?
Correct.
Why?
That, that's just, that, that's what informed by the Hawaii Department of Transportation that they've received this, um, grant funding to explore the feasibility of constructing this cap park. Yes.
Go ahead, go ahead. We got a cap over.
There are two active sites of little fire ants that were detected near the Oahu Country Club back in May and June of last year. You can now test for these little fire ants for free by going to www.stoptheant.org and requesting for an ant identification collection kit. You can also call and click the statewide pest hotline at 643pest.org or you can also call at 808-643-7378, um, for that, um, for the ants. Um, if you're home, test positive for these little fire ants from the ant identification collection kit. Um, the Oahu Invasive Species Committee will, will come to your house and survey, um, at no cost to you and assess the next steps. So following that, please do not hesitate to call the Carl Rhodes office at 808-586-6130 with any questions or concerns, or you can also email at sendroads@capital.hawaii.gov. And I also have, um, following up from last month, we had, um, Mr. Lim. You brought up a, a meeting you had with Senator Rhodes regarding a bill. Um, the bill was about healthcare for those that are underage and getting permission, um, without their, well, without parental consent. And I was unable to find that bill and I was just wondering if there was, if you had anything, if you remember anything from that meeting? Or yeah, so, and other than that, if there's any questions, I will sure, um, see what I can do. And if not, come back next month. Thank you.
Questions from the board? Questions from the audience? If not, thank you very much. Thank, uh, Senator Rhodes.
Thank you so much.
Yes. How about, uh, next Senator Kim's office?
Hi, good evening Chair Fong. This is Kathy from Senator Kim's office. Um, good evening Chair, Board and Community Members. So Senator Kim's February Community Report was digitally sent to Chair Fong, I believe, um, sometime last week. Um, I'll just keep it short because I know the meeting has gone on long. So, um, on January 28th, Senator Kim attended Representative Takinuuchi's town meeting on traffic. Um, she wanted known that she supports the DOT's efforts to address speeding and other traffic issues. And lastly, she thanks everyone who filled out her survey. Um, I'm available for any questions or concerns.
It's fast. Any questions from the board?
I'll just keep.
Any from the audience? Okay, thank you very much. And please thank Senator Kim. Next, um, Representative.
Thank you.
Takinucci, are you here? No, are you on Webex? Jenna?
Hi, um, Kelton here for, uh, Representative Jenna Takinucci's office.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, so just a couple of quick, uh, ongoing issues from last month. Um, first, the Botanical Garden homeless encampment. Um, we reached out to DOT, uh, and they continue to monitor and maintain the area under the school street bridge, uh, in shoulder area. Um, we'll continue to keep checking on this, um, and pass along any updates that we receive. Um, for, there was a question about the, uh, trash, uh, trucks blocking, uh, like a bus stop area. Uh, the representative wanted me to check if a board member, uh, Kristen has, still has photos that she would like to submit for the private trash companies to help show the problem areas where they are blocking bus stops with their, um, either their bins. I think it's their bins. Um, so if I, I can reach out to you, uh, if you have those photos as well. Um, and then lastly, the, uh, New Wano Stream Bridge near Bates Street. Uh, we reported the issue to the, uh, to DFM, the Department of Facility Maintenance. Uh, they let us know they added it to their list of stream areas to clean, but could not provide us with an exact timeline. Uh, I will continue to pass along any updates that we receive about that as well. Um, moving into our standard report, um, we wanted to share that the Judiciary's Office on Equity and Access to the Courts, uh, announced registration for a new state, uh, interpreters, um, which, which just opened. Uh, the judiciary is seeking freelance interpreters for all languages. If you're interested, applicants, uh, must submit a court interpreter certi, certi, uh, certif, uh, certifying program, uh, application and attend a two basic day orientation. Um, the workshop costs, uh, $25 to attend and an application will not be confirmed for the workshop until the registration payment is received. If, if you're select, selected, compensation starts at $35 per hour, includes round trip mileage reimbursement, exemptions from expired meter parking tickets, um, while on assignment and commuter time payments. Uh, I'll post the details, uh, if you want to learn more information about that and contact information for, for the interpreter program. And then, uh, lastly, um, we also wanted to share that the Department of Land and Natural Resources, uh, announced their annual Hawaii Wildlife Conservation and Game Bird Stamp Annual Art Contest, uh, which opened on February 5th. Uh, entries will be accepted through April 5th, 2025. The wildlife conservation stamp is a requirement for Hawaii State hunting licenses and, uh, the game bird stamp is required for anyone intending to hunt game birds. Both stamps are also available to stamp collectors. The winner will receive a maximum award of $1,000 and will be announced in late April. Um, if you're interested in doing that, I'll post some of the details to the chat, um, and contact information, uh, if you have any questions. Um, I'm also available to answer any questions.
There's a couple of questions, uh, before I ask the board. Um, the interpreters that you need, the court needs, is there any specific language that they're looking for? If you know.
From my underst, from my understanding, no. I think it's kind of, yeah, all, all languages are accepted or they're looking for interpreters for all languages.
Second, second question. I have just three real quick ones. The Lilio Colony Gardens, are we having any complaints? I haven't heard in much about it. I mean, I think that the, the homeless are still underneath the bridge and the state's supposed to be taking care of that area.
Yeah, a good question. Um, so I, I reach out monthly to DOT. Uh, DOT assures me that their portion is maintained and clean. You know, it's kind of like a split jurisdiction, uh, with the city and the state. I know the, the city, I think, is waiting on some of, the rainy weather, I guess, has impeded their progress. And when they have, they have to drive their trucks down there and the, I guess there's just some issues there. So we, we continue to follow up with them. We haven't heard too much. Um, but we definitely know it's an ongoing issue that you guys, uh, you know, have told us about.
Is the state coordinating with the city? Because I know that the bridge is under state jurisdiction, the park is under city jurisdiction and the homeless are playing little games. You're going to kick out of the state, you go to the city's property and if you, you kicked out of the city, you go to the state's property. Uh, I see Ed's kind of shaking his head. I'm, I'm, I hope that you're coordinating this with, with the city. I was there about quite a few weeks ago and the city is, the, the park is deserted. So I didn't sit in, and I talked to some of the, uh, neighbors, uh, next to the park and they didn't seem like concerned. So I don't know. You were going to say something?
Yes. Sorry, um, I, I, I suppose I can pose this question to the rep's office and to the city. But, and correct me if I misunderstood this. The state's able to go in and take care of their portion, which is under the bridge, correct?
Correct.
And then the issue is that the city's unable to go in and take care of their portion? Or is it a scheduling thing still? Because I understand that scheduling was an issue that came up before. But if it's an equipment thing, is it possible that the city is able to work with the state? I'm, I'm just trying to think of solutions here for this.
Um, yeah, from my understanding, it's, it's a scheduling issue along with just kind of, you know, something I can definitely bring up to Rep, uh, Representative and see if she has any other ideas and can report back with that. Uh, I think it's, you know, we do reach out to both the state, you know, DOT and, um, DFM, who I believe is responsible for the city portion of, of the Botanical Garden. So, um, you know, uh, yeah, we, we definitely reach out every month to, to both and, and are trying to make it happen. We know it's a, an important issue, issue to you guys, so.
Okay, thank you. And then thank you to the reps office and all parties involved. We, um, but thank you.
Thank you very much. Anivia from the board? Any questions from the audience? Uh, you noticed that they're under, um, Representative Takinucci, there's a status of the Hala Keepa State Youth Kalahale in Whorakini area. Uh, I got a call from, um, the representative saying she knows nothing about it, it's not in her jurisdiction. But do we have somebody to speak on that?
Yes, Chair. Uh, this is Brandon Mitsuda, board member. Hi.
I thought you were going to have another representative.
Yes, we are, we are. Uh, thank you so very much for allowing, uh, this, this agenda item to be put on. You know, as part of the, uh, the governor's Kalahale initiative, uh, you know, we're really trying to get out there to, uh, create Kalahale that are helping, uh, specific types of population for those that are experiencing housing instability. And one area that experiences a lot of housing instability is the area of youth. And so tonight we've brought, uh, Hala Keepa here with, uh, not only its CEO, but with the various staff that would be operating, uh, this Kalahale. And they just wanted to meet all of you, say hello, tell you a little bit about the Kalahale and then provide, uh, more contact information for all of you in case you had any questions, uh, going in the future. So with that, I'll introduce, uh, the CEO of Hala Keepa.
Mahalo Brandon. Aloha, everyone. My name is Venus Rosetti Maderas and I am the CEO of Hala Keepa. And I just want to, um, first of all, mahalo Chair and board members and the community members for allowing us to share a little bit more about our Kalahale opio. We'll be serving young people from the ages of 18 to 24 years old. Um, I'm going to introduce our team right now who will talk a little bit more about what we plan to do at the Kalahale. So I have Ron Mush, who is here. He is our chief program officer. Ron, you want to say hi?
Aloha, everyone. And yeah, mahalo Brandon and the board for allowing us some, a moment to share with you, uh, what we are really privileged to be able to take part in with the governor's office. I'll, um, that's probably enough for me and turn it over to Stacy.
Aloha Brandon and board. I'm Stacy Piler. I'm the Director of Shelter and Residential Services. I will turn it over to Nalani.
Oh, is Nalani on? Oh, there's Nalani. You got to unmute Nalani. There you go. No?
Aloha, everyone. My name is Nalani Nahino and I'll be the Program Manager of Kalahale Opio.
Yeah, so, um, Nalani, you want to share a little bit about what's going to be happening at the Kalahale and the location?
So we are located at three one seven UU, UE place. Um, we have two uh, houses on the property. So the front house will house ten young males, ages eighteen to twenty-four, and the back house will house six females. So the criteria for us is they need to be either working, employed, or going to school.
So Ha- Hala Keepa has been doing this kind of work for over fifty-five years. So we kind of, um, have learned a lot of lessons in this, in this field and we are, we have several different transitional homes across the island. Now, this, this particular Kalahale will be kind of like our last stop for young people before they go out on their own. So they'll be coming in, in our, our, um, I would say our kind of, um, first step housing for transitional living, where we'll be working with them, teaching them life skills, job skills, financial literacy skills, relationship skills. So when they go through that process, they're able to, like Nalani said, either obtain a job or get enrolled in school. And if they are at risk of being homeless, we will then transition them into this housing in, um, in the Liliha area or Kuakini area. So, um, yeah, and like Nalani said, we have sixteen, we'll have case managers working with them. And Nalani is our Program Manager. So at any time you have any questions, any concerns, you can reach out to Nalani. Nalani, you want to give them your phone number? Or you can call Hala Keepa as well.
Yes, my, and my, uh, work cell is eight oh eight two seven seven five one five nine. Again, eight oh eight two seven seven five one five nine. And I'd like to, um, also let you know that we did hire a program coordinator and a case manager. We are still hiring, uh, another case manager, a program assistant, and an overnight residential staff, which is essentially like our security guard. So we will have staffing seven days a week.
Thank you, Nalani. And you know, you're talking about if we were full, we would have sixteen young people. We, parking is an issue. We understand that. The property itself can hold eight cars. So, um, you know, and I can imagine a lot of those young people will probably not have their own vehicle. Um, they will be taking public transportation. Some of them were partnering with UH Mauna. So some of our young people who come here for college, they end up in the dorms, they realize how expensive it is once, um, they get, you know, situated in school and they are at risk of being homeless. And so, um, we, we're partnering with their case managers to see if, um, they can possibly become residents of this Kalahale as well. So you're talking about some, you know, young people who are ambitious, they're, you know, they're working, they're going to school. And I think it's a great service that we can come together as a community and just really support them to be successful.
Okay, well.
We'll also have staff on duty from ten o'clock at night to six o'clock in the morning. Should, should something happen, you know, during the nighttime, a staff member will be there. And like Nalani said, we'll have staff on property seven days a week.
Thank you very much. Um, as I heard about Hala Keepa and I congratulate you what you're doing for young, our young men and women. Uh, a couple of, a couple of questions, uh, how you fund it? And the second question is, what is, if anything, do you want us, our board to do? Or is this only for information?
Yeah, so it's being funded through the state, so the governor's initiative with the Kalahales. So we are going to be, if I'm not mistaken, Brandon, the first Kalahale opio, the first one. Um, it is a project of our First Lady, J.B. Green, um, who at, you know, one time did sit on our board at Hala Keepa. So she understands the work that we do. She understands the need and so she really advocated for a youth Kalahale to be built.
Second question, is there anything that you want us to do in regards to as a board? Or is this only for information?
Chair, just to confirm, this is just for information only and, um, Hala Keepa has taken a great initiative to talk to the surrounding neighbors, to inform them of, of what's, of what's going to be potentially happening there. And the neighbors have been very positive in their support to help the youth.
Great, thanks, Brandon. Uh, any questions from the board? Any questions from the audience? Okay, if not, thank you very much and keep up the good work.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, moving right along. Let's see, Daniel Holt. Oh, I see we have Representative Hussey. And I'll see it, and I think all of us know we're not always honored by having a representative from the the twenty-ninth district attend, so I want to thank you for being here.
Thanks, I'm always happy to be here. How's everybody doing? I wanted to let you know about some upcoming road closures that we're aware of, and they're thankfully more on, on that side of the district. There's going to be two right lanes closed on the H-one freeway in the eastbound direction in the vicinity of Liki Like at the off-ramp at exit twenty A and Halona Street from Monday today through this Thursday, from nine PM to twelve AM. They're going to be excavating and concrete pouring. There's also another twenty-four hour closure on the right shoulder of H-one in the eastbound direction from Kawa Street to Richard Lane, or in the, I'm sorry, in the vicinity of Kawa Street and Richard Lane. And that's twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Uh, we're approaching the, the, the point of the legislative session where bills will start to move from one house to another. And so thankfully for everyone following the legislative process, there will be a sort of a decrease in the number of bills. But probably a, a heightening of anxiety about what's actually going to be passing, what's not going to be passing. So, um, if anyone would like to come in and, you know, get more involved in the legislative process, we have an excellent public access room on the fourth floor where there's professionals who are really just focused on making sure that the public is as engaged as they want to be in the lawmaking process. But they're, they're really great people. Um, and the last thing I wanted to mention is, I know that a lot, a lot of people are very concerned, as am I, about the impact of federal budget changes and federal budget cuts on programs like Medicaid, um, free and reduced school lunches, um, housing. You know, for instance, in our district, we have Lanaquila, right? And Lanaquila is primarily, I, I think a lot of their budget at least is federal funds. So, you know, there's a lot of, there's going to be a lot of budgetary impacts to Hawaii. Like, for instance, on Medicaid alone, we're looking at a cut of m- maybe one point five billion dollars, so about half of the Medicaid budget. Really huge cuts. So we're going to be holding, um, at least one community meeting in the next couple of weeks um, to just talk through what the impacts of those cuts will be just on our district, just on District Twenty-nine. And, um, so, you know, there's kind of the big picture stuff, but I think it's hel- helpful if we can see how it's actually going to affect the, um, you know, our, our neighbors, our, our families. So if you would like to be involved in that conversation, um, you can email me at rephussey@capital.hawaii.gov and we'll be sure to make sure that you have an invitation and are aware of the timing and location of that meeting. And so again, my email is rephussey and that's H-U-S-E-Y at capital.hawaii.gov. Okay, thank you.
Uh, any questions? I have two questions, real quick. Uh, are we going to see you on April the twelfth, riding your bike?
You know, I, I have been participating in the last several years of, of that event. It's a lot of fun. It really is. And, uh, I would, I would encourage everyone to participate.
Well, we're impressed. Congratulations.
It's all downhill. So it's a lot easier.
I, I, boy, I give you a lot of credit. I don't know if I can ask you this, but I didn't, I didn't see any of the representatives here. There's a bill that is going to be coming before you folks. And that's a nepotism bill, okay? Nepotism.
Nepotism bill.
Yeah, basically it says that if you are a state employee and you cannot supervise or hire somebody who is a relative, period. But it doesn't apply to the legislators.
What is the bill number?
That's what I like to know. I forgot. Uh, I'm, I'm Chair of the State Ethics Commission. I just thought if you knew about it.
I'll ask my sister, she works for me. No, I'm just kidding. It's a funny joke because I don't have a sister. That's why it's funny. Okay, SB, all right.
Have you heard, heard about that bill?
No, but I am aware of, you know, there's been lots of problems with nepotism at the legislature.
Yeah, I was just curious. Since you're the only, only live representative here. I was going to ask Janet too, but, but if you, you know, pay attention to that.
Sure. I've always thought nepotism is a problem in any professional setting, right? In, and in, including the state Capitol.
And the federal government, which, you know. But anyway, I just thought, I was curious to see if you, you heard about it.
You know, we'll, we'll see it when it moves over to the House in a few weeks.
It passed the only committee in the Senate going to the third breeding floor vote in the Senate and then it will head to the House.
Pay attention.
And I'll tell you, my, my kind of gut feeling is that there's, there's actually several bills and several elements of state law there. The legislature, you know, Carol works at the Capitol too. You know, the, the legislature does a, a, a really hard, um, there's a lot of work in trying to craft a good policy. But then we exempt ourselves. And I've always thought that that's a little hypocritical, you know? We should pass a law that applies to everyone. No one is above the law. And, and I, I think that's a really important principle for, just for democracy in general. And so, you know, I think about like, for instance, the sunshine law. Right? The sunshine law applies to neighborhood board members. It applies to other deliberative bodies like the Office of One Affairs and City Councils. Does not apply to the, to the state House of Representatives or to the state senate. And I think that's a problem. I think we should have one sunshine law that works for everybody. It's actually, I have a bill, I can't remember the number right now, but it's, it's trying to homogenize the sunshine laws that it can be equally applied to all deliberative bodies in the state.
Chair, this, uh, this bill that just passed, it's passing through the Senate, basically makes no nepotism in the legislature. It removes the legislature from being, um, exempted. So it actually, it leaves, uh, judicial. That's it.
I have a personal interest in that since I'm the Chair of the State Ethics Commission. We, we introduced that. I said, what's good for the goose has got to be good for the gander, right?
That's right.
Yeah. Well, thank you very much, Carol.
Fair is fair, right?
Very good. Any, any other questions? All right, if not, uh, thank you again for coming. All right.
Excuse me, Chair Fong, I have my hand up. Um, this is Kathy from Senator Kim's office.
Sorry, who's that?
Oh, this is Kathy from Senator Kim's office. I had my hand up.
Oh, okay.
So that particular bill is SB one five four five. And Senator Kim introduced that bill, actually. And so, Carol, you are exactly correct. It repeals the legislature's exemption from the nepotism law back in twenty twenty-three.
Terrific. Thank you very much. All right, um, uh, let the record note, uh, we do have, uh, another member of our board who just, Mr. Pang? Thank you. So make sure your presence is noted. All right, uh, let's see, Governor's Representative. How about Representative from Ed Case's office? No? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of January thirteenth. Everybody speak up. Yeah, okay. Any corrections before I ask for the motion? Okay, if not, all in favor of approving the minutes of January thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five, raise your right hand? Any objections? Seeing none, motions carried. Thank you. All right, community organizations, Malahia, anybody from Malahia? Anybody from St. Francis? Anybody from, yes, Malanaquila?
Yes. So, um, the big news, show and sell. Coming up, twenty-first, Friday the twenty-first, from eight to ten thirty, show and sell at Lanaquila Senior Center, Multipurpose Senior Center. Show and sell. Show and sell is the craft fair and food fair where all the clubs make things. Then they sell them to make money to do their club activities. So always, the Portuguese club always makes Portuguese bean soup. Korean club makes great food. I don't know who's, uh, out front, because there's always one club doing the major food, but those are always there. Twenty-first of, of February, eight to ten thirty. And then all the crafts, so anything sewn, anything cookies. Last time they were really good cookies. Um, yeah, so please show up and support the center and all of the folks doing all of that. Uh, there is a new CEO and President of the Catholic Charities that runs Lanaquila Multipurpose Senior Center, and that's Tina Andrade. So she's, um, come on board, I think it was a month ago or so. And then they have started pickleball. Okay, normally that makes everybody really, really excited, but, okay. So they have, they have four courts that they use across the street at Lanaquila Park. And they have over eighty people participating in it. And that's, if no one has any questions, that's it.
Any questions? Uh, congratulations to Tina Andrade. She was there when I was on the Catholic Charities board, so she's really come up the ranks and she's very good. So, twenty-first of February, Portuguese bean soup. All right. Questions?
Made by Portuguese grandmas. It doesn't get any better than that, okay?
I thought you were going to tell me it's Chinese due year and we made joke.
Well, they usually take a fraction. The Chinese club does make jokes.
Okay, uh, let's see. Friends of Liliha Library, Brandon, what's, where are we going to have an open house? Is he still there?
Yes, I'm still here, Chair. I will, I will check with, uh, Senator Chanokan. I know it's been very busy for them, but I'm hoping that we can one day have everybody come down for that tour.
No, I was waiting for the open house with heavy pupus and drinks.
That I don't know, but I'll, I'll, I'll get back to you.
Okay, it's, it's, they've been renovated. It's been around two years now, huh?
It's been a long time, yeah.
Wow, yeah, well, it's good. Very good. All right.
Thank you, Chair.
Any other nonprofit organizations? Yes, Big Spie.
I have two chairs, so go one by one, okay? Just with interest of time, since we got all night here, right, Donald? Um, Mr. Chair, my name is Big Spie Ho. I am the Chairman and CEO of the Hawaii Cyber Lions Club. Hawaii Cyber Lions is part of the District Fifty Lions Club around the state of Hawaii. We'd like to officially welcome everybody to our Lions Day in the Park event on Saturday, March eighth, at the Fosse Civic Center Grounds from ten AM to two PM. Uh, for more information, go to hawaiilions.org. There will be informational tables to learn how to do CPR the traditional way without breathing into somebody's mouth, um, learning how to use an AED. And also I think we're going to have doggy CPR as well too, so. Very cool, right? Again, check, check out Hawaii, it's be HawaiiLions.org, Saturday, March eighth, Fosse Civic Center Grounds, Lions Day in the Park. Uh, Mr. Chair, Big Spie Ho, on behalf of the Alzheimer's Association of Hawaii, I am the Chair of the two thousand twenty-five Oahu Walk Experience. This year, we are pleased to announce that our walk will be on Saturday, November eighth, at Magic Island, beginning at eight o'clock AM. It's a nice walk around Magic Island. Bring your friends, family, um, pet, what have you. Um, there's going to be a lot of entertainment, a lot of informational booths. And I hear a lot of really good food as well too.
Great. Any questions? No, thank you very much, Big Spie. You're very, very. No, thank you very much, Bixy, you're very, very active, very good, I'm glad you're doing a lot of community service. All right, um, announcements, don't forget candidate registration. All of you should hopefully, uh, re- registered for, um, being back on the board. And, uh, the next meeting will be on March the tenth, uh, same time, same station. I entertain a motion to adjourn. By Carol, second by chance, all in favors, just raise your right hand. No opposition? It is now eight twenty-one, and the meeting is adjourned, thank you, everybody. Thank you, Fong, you have come.